I was gonna ask you.
Since you allow me to do the work and you're gonna perform the work and pay for the cost of seven twenty-five. I will leave it up to Gateway to perform the work and pay for the cost of seven twenty-five.
It wasn't clear to me.
I'm telling you how I interpreted it wrong. Because it says, because... Since you do not allow me to do the work, I will leave it up to Gateway to perform the work.
Okay. I'm sorry, I misinterpreted that.
Then I'll take care of the maintenance, you know.
Okay. All right. I was gonna ask you to come up. That's why I took that.
Wow, all right.
I'm sorry. It wasn't clear to me. It wasn't intentional.
He tells me...
Because it was clear impossible. Because I said...
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Well, we just talked about it. Right, right. And then...
Yeah, we're looking at something.
We miss him.
I interpreted this. The reason I...
Will he come back?
And now what I wanna do is I put it on here.
I will leave it up to Gateway to perform the work and pay for the cost, meaning you would pay.
No, it doesn't say I would pay.
It says I will do it on Gateway.
And... Yeah, I'll leave it up to Gateway.
It wasn't clear to me.
Well, tell them I'm gonna send them next to help that they come up with the location where we were again. They were...
We just take fence down. Then we just each have a...
I was right across, just to go tell them.
Take the fence down from this fence to that.
Oh, you did not pass out. You're in the...
The next guy. We know people who love to move in Devonshire. I'm very interested in HUW. We know a number of people who've been doing it over the years. I would have bought the Gooch House there, but we bought in '05 when it was a peak and nothing was...
Ladies and gentlemen, I apologize for the interruption, but we are now back on the air and I hope there will be no more interruptions, at least for a while, and I believe that Tinkle was proceeding.
Same person, Ed Tinkle, Ben Fine Drive. Second issue I've got that we ran into with Gateway Greens that came up was the issue of Fairway Lakes Office Park is being billed, their lighting system is being billed by FPL against our account. Well, we got that corrected and it's all done, but I guess there's some people very upset by the fact there's...
I'm sorry, there's what?
There's people upset that there's no lights over there now because apparently FPL shut them off, which raises the issue. That was under a, from the very beginning, as I understand, a POA, much like Town Lakes Office Park. Town Lakes Office Park came to you all and negotiated a deal for closing out that POA, and you have a separate account, I don't know which one of the OO's, OO five, not double O seven, OO five account for them, which basically takes care of that situation and eliminates the need for having the POA. I'm wondering if it wouldn't be a bad idea, because one of the property managers over there, happens to be our property manager for Gateway Greens, and was asking, what's, why are we doing this? And I said, well, your problem is, is that you've got eight heads and no leader. The POA went away and nobody's talking over there. So they either need to create a POA or you all bite the bullet and create OO six or OO nine or whatever it is account and say, okay, the power bills are coming here, we're gonna disperse them to you on your annual budget. Same thing with the road. That road's gonna be an issue one of these days. The last I heard, that was one of the roads, in fact, I think it was the seventh road we talked about, and it never did get added on to the list of the roads that WCI was going to do. It's sort of out there in Never Never Land. But road sidewalks, all of the public amenities that the rest of us either handle through an HOA or a POA over there is just fell between the cracks. But I would suggest that somebody contact the various sub-associations that are within Fairway Lakes Office Park, get them all together and say, guys, this is the way it's gonna be, we're gonna have an account, a new one, and this is how you're gonna be billed on this, because obviously they need lights over there. But one of the things that was amazing to me is we were billed for 16 lights, I went over there and inventoried them last week, three of the lights don't even have a light on the top. It's gone.
A bulb?
A bulb, hell, there ain't nothing up there. It's gone. It's like, I don't, a semi couldn't have hit them, they're up 25 feet in the air. The box, what I call the shoebox, it's gone. So it's real, real good billing procedure going on by FPL. But then the same thing applies, so we get that same mess down at South of Commerce Lakes in that commercial park. That POA, as I understand it, did the same thing. We had sidewalks and streets down there in that area that one of these days, irrigation, one of these days is gonna come up as an issue. They're basically in the same boat. So maybe what need to do is just cover them both at the same time and have some type of a, if they wanna not create a POA like the rest of us, then handle it as a separate billing to them and they just get charged accordingly. So they have their own little invoice at the end of the year that's added to your base contract to create their total assessment. You did it with Town Lakes Office Park and it sounded like it was a compromise and it worked. I don't know why we'd, how Fairway Lakes and the other one dropped through. And I don't know if there are any other ones east of Gateway Boulevard on the deal going out, Commerce Lake Drive East. If that POA's still in existence or not, I have no idea. But it might be something that you wanna chase down because there's gonna be, somebody's gonna be picking up the tab for it, and the rest of us sure as dickens don't need any more added to our expense through the CDD. So I'd ask that maybe you take a look at that and create separate accounts and bill them accordingly.
Thank you.
And then I'll be back for 3B whenever.
Can I make a comment, please, on this?
Please do.
Ed, and Tony as well, we're going back to the turnover, the potential turnover of these minor roads to the district. We approved that months ago, and Ed's right, Fairway Lakes POA dissolved, WCI dissolved it, I think it was '09 or '10, something like that. We looked at those records.
Yes, I can recall it. Yeah, it's got back to the chief's memo, there was a memo about that.
But it was dissolved, and that then throws up this issue that Ed's raising, and that is, you know, are we doing, are we providing, Scott, are we providing landscaping services to Fairway Lakes area as we are doing under GF5 for Town Lake? And are we billing for it?
The only thing we're doing, I think, at Fairway is we are weeding the bull nose at the entrance.
Yeah, the way I understand GF5, Town Lake, is that we provide landscaping services and the main corners and we build them back. Now there is no POA, we build individual commercial residents back under GF5.
That's correct.
What about street lighting? Do we, as a district, absorb the lighting or do we charge that back as well under GF5?
I think it's all built in. I don't, I'm not 100% sure.
I just, and I'm not sure either about the feeling, it's just only a landscape charge back, not lighting. And my question, and it comes back to your point, do we, are we responsible for charging back lighting? For example, if we're charging back lighting in Town Lake, which I don't think we are, but we could be, then where do you draw the line? Do we charge back the lighting along Commerce Lakes or do we charge it back to Fairway Lakes? Or is it just the landscaping? We need to figure out what our position is on this, I think. And if we are performing landscaping or lighting services for a small area like that, we have to decide whether we're gonna charge it back or not. That's just a policy decision.
I don't know the answer.
Yeah, and one thing that you'll find out with FP now, I've had other attorneys in my office have his experiences with other communities, residential and commercial communities in Lee and Khyber County, their record-keeping is horrible. I mean, it's business, it really is, because a lot of times they don't even have the original contracts for communities that were developed in the 80s and 90s and they're billing A and they should've been billing B or C, and it's just all over the board. So we'll look at it, I'll, you know, work with Scott on that and just let you know what Ed Tinkle was saying about FPL, I'm not surprised.
Well, the reason, the reason I brought it up is FPL's the one who told us to come and get our money back from the CDD.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should put Scott on it.
From the CDD.
Mr. Chairman.
And that's where the misunderstanding comes, because they thought that the CDD should've been paying the bill in the first place. Like you said, they're just right next to Comcast, don't have a clue what they're doing.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest, as Tony said, that we ask the district, Scott and Cal, to take a look at, where do we draw the line on FPL bills? Are we all in it for all streets or are there some minor streets where we charge it back?
That's an excellent idea. I wanted to just remind everybody that when we were working on the roads, the Gateway turnover, we know some of what you just referred to, and we tried to get a hold of those POAs and they're out of business or dissolved in some respect.
Yeah, the Town Lakes Office Park, there's a paper trail, the rest of them, just like, they're gone.
Thank you. And Mr. Scott, did you hear Mr. Senior's been...
Yes.
Do you have any reason that they can't be put on your agenda?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Yes, you have Rick Diaz, who is, wants to talk about the utility director position.
I am Rick Diaz. I have been sending you guys things via email. Did you all receive what I sent?
Yes.
I'm here because there's a concern as to my, you know, Mr. Ivan Vellis, who I'm proposing to replace, if you so desire, and provide you the engineering services that you need. It is my understanding that the position has been posted, I have already applied for the position, however, I find that the position does not require a professional engineer's license as posted. I would recommend making that change. I'm also here to provide you a proposal for the interim period between what would be Tuesday, Mr. Vellis's last day, till you hire a replacement for him, if it's not me. I'm ready to answer any questions, doubts and concerns you may have.
Any questions from the board? Please contact Mr. Scott Connell there with your proposal and it'll be considered.
The proposal was directed to the board following the position that Mr. Vellis was filling as to an overseer of the contracted entities. But, you know, I'm here as a consultant to satisfy any concerns or needs that you may have.
I understand precisely what you're saying. Please give your document to Mr. Connell, it'll be considered.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Manager?
Okay. Thanks. Good to see you. That's all I have.
Oh, great. Okay. Item three, discussion. Item A is Stephen Paul Parcel, Mr. Connell, will you help us out here?
Hello? Scott Connell, we've talked about this a few times, and I've had several discussions with Mr. Paul about his easement, and he's come before you in, back in November, and we have continued the discussion since the last meeting, and what you have in your book has now been modified slightly. He has requested to have a approximately 24-foot opening in between the two wells, and the wells are on slabs and things, so the modification of the existing chain-link fence. And the revised price for doing the chain-link fence relocation is, as I received yesterday, was $725. And he has written to me as of last night, and he states that, since you will not allow me to do work on the fence, I will leave it up to Gateway to perform the work and pay for the cost of approximately $725. And he says, you do not need to install the black slats in the chain-link fence. And then he would, he will care for the maintenance of the 25-foot approximate access in the rear of his lot. So that's where we are today.
Does that sound like a reasonable proposal to you?
Well, he and I have gone back numerous times and I misunderstood this email I got yesterday until he cleared it up a few minutes ago.
But as written, is it, does it sound reasonable and something that you would recommend to us?
I would recommend that we can accommodate the fence relocation through an operations aspect. We can still function with the wells, we still have access to the wells. He would be responsible for maintaining the yard in between the wells, grading, irrigation, sod, mowing, fertilizer, whatever, with the understanding that that is, we have an easement on that property and that we can have the need of access to the wells as necessary.
If the attorney could put together a document with those considerations, would you be supportive?
I think it's your choice.
Well, I know it's my choice, but I want you to make a recommendation, please.
Well, why don't we have Tony make the recommendation? He's already had, he's already given us a recommendation in the book.
Yeah, I think in the memorandum, if I recall correctly, that provided to the board was that, you know, in our opinion, from a legal perspective, that it was unreasonable to, for a 10-foot line, with the understanding being conveyed to Mr. Paul that the district would have the right at any time to exercise its full, you know, easement rights under the easements that we have, if the board wishes based upon the request by Mr. Paul for 24 feet, that's, you know, that's a board decision with the same kind of caveats to Mr. Paul, that the, at any point in time, it's merely an accommodation to him, it's not giving up any rights or equating in our dominant estate we have, and that we could at any point in time fence the entire item off or utilize the entire utility and drainages for our necessary purposes. And that's, once again, it's either 10 or 24 feet, I think what Scott's saying, that can still perform the function of 24, is that fair at the present time? Yes. With the caveat that if we need to use it further in the future, that that would be the understanding of Mr. Paul. But I just wanna be clear that he is expecting the district to pay the $725 to relocate the fence.
Are there any new items to be installed, like a gate?
That includes a new gate and relocation of an existing gate and existing fence material.
So it's the 725 is not just for relocating stuff, it's for buying something new as well?
It includes a, an additional gate, yes. It's all-inclusive in that number.
Why, so why aren't these costs being borne by him?
Again, I am presenting...
Friendly question.
To me?
Yeah.
Personally, I feel he bought the property with the existing conditions and therefore a modification, if you, as a board, want to grant the easement, I feel that he should bear the cost if the board would want to grant that easement.
Well stated. Absolutely.
I think, but also, Scott, to balance this out, and please let, please chip in on this, but I understand that the resident is also willing to do some work on his own re-sodding and some other work, is that true, at his own cost?
Yes, if he wants to extend the sod in his backyard and regrade it and install irrigation and continue to maintain...
I'm just trying to get a balance here.
It would be his responsibility, the district would not be maintaining that.
Are we, are we, are we entering this in a spirit of cooperation is what I'm interested in? Or is it all on one side? I'd rather see both sides be involved and both sides have a bit of skin in it if necessary.
Why would we be responsible to take care of his personal yard and put in the irrigation?
We're not, Gary, we're not responsible, I agree with you. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to be resident-centric. Mr. Chairman, it's up to you to how to control this, but...
I have a question. We have this letter and it says that the existing fencing to adjust, it would be 1640, regrading and sodding would be 1,000, and then 500 for any unforeseen conditions. So that's a lot more than...
700.
$725.
Since that memo was written, additional conversations have taken place.
Okay.
And we are down now to what I just mentioned.
The 725.
The $725 to relocate the fence, and then he'd be responsible for maintaining or modifying, I mean, in addition to maintaining any sod or grading landscaping.
Okay.
So that's out of our responsibility, he would take that on, but he is asking that the district pay for the fence relocation.
Mr. Connell, we have spent an awful lot of time on this, and Mr. Paul has changed his request or demand on numerous occasions. I wanna be as citizen-centric, revocent-centric as I possibly can be, but I can't see the slightest reason why this district should pay to move around fences and gates on his property, which he brought, and he wasn't blind when he bought it. I wanna be, I wanna be responsible and I wanna be helpful as I can, but I'm getting tired of listening to this. I think if Mr. Paul wants to pay to have it done, whether we do it and he pays us or whether he does it himself under our supervision, I couldn't care less as long as it makes good sense to the, to the board. Now, are we gonna, are we gonna move forward on this or are we gonna delay it to another meeting?
My opinion is that we are compromising by allowing the reconfiguration of the fencing.
I'll agree with that. And if he, if he'll agree to what you just said and pay for it, I think we can probably have a deal this afternoon, otherwise...
I would agree with that.
Thank you. Excuse me, bud.
I also, you know, I read our attorney's memo, and his recommendation in the last paragraph of his letter is that, in his opinion, the access pathway should not exceed the 10 feet, which he can, he considered reasonable. We're talking about a lot bigger pathway than that.
Yeah, based on further conversations with Scott, I'm comfortable with, it could be the 24-foot, based upon not interfering with the district's utilization of its facilities and that easement. And by widening, by widening it, it provides Mr. Paul the opportunity to have a greater window of view. It also provides access if he wants to come in, as he expressed to me, future date, he might wanna build a patio or a pool or spa or something, and he can gain access from the rear, from the easement, for the heavy equipment, and that way they don't have to go through the neighbor's yard. So it's a, it was a compromise that I felt was reasonable to widen from the 10 feet.
Mr. Chairman, it's clear that the district is giving something here. Why don't we ask the resident if he thinks what we're giving is worth 7, paying $725 and settle the deal?
I think that's a great idea. Mr. Paul, please come to the podium.
Stephen Paul, 11234 Lakeland Circle. Now, you're talking about all these changes to wanting this, wanting that, and we came in once with a proposal and nobody did anything with it for seven months or eight months. Came back in November, Scott and I walked the property and said, well, if we put it here and here, how would that be? That's when the $1,600 estimate came up. And then we rewalked it, figured out if we just do a 25-foot shot, bring the cost way down, you know, nothing was ever brought up as far as who was paying for the cost, as far as you guys wanting me to pay for the cost. And yeah, it's a fence on my property denying me access. And I saw when I moved in, I thought that's where my property ended. It doesn't. My property line extends to the back, and that's the difference.
Mr. Senior asked a question if you were coming to the podium.
Scott, Scott Connell's given us the opinion that the district is trying hard to give you something, what you're asking for.
Right.
And in return, would you, do you think it's worth you paying $725 to settle this deal?
I would love to, if I could afford it. I told him many times, I'll do the fence, I have no problem. I've done chain-link fences before. I've been told, no.
You've been told, no?
That I could not install the chain-link fence or do the work.
No.
I think it's our offense, I would imagine, from a legal perspective, we should be the ones who relocate it into that.
I think it's best that the district do it.
Are you saying, are you saying it's just a question of being able to afford it, is the issue here?
Yeah. You know, I've put in chain-link fences before, I know how to do it.
If it's a matter of affording it, then if I were in your position, I wouldn't be here asking for that 725 bucks. And since I'm kind of in real estate for 38 years and know the expenses...
And so have I been.
That 725, you did have home inspection when you bought the house, correct?
Correct, and a survey.
You had a survey?
Absolutely.
That was what I was hoping you'd say. So the survey, obviously...
This isn't, I gotcha.
This isn't where you interrupt me, this is you coming asking for something. You had a survey, you stood there before, we can play back the tape, and said that you didn't realize that the property went behind that.
I did not.
Well, you had a survey.
Yeah, it was in a stack of closing papers.
Now again, you're asking us to come and make these changes and saying that you can't afford $725.
Yeah.
Please.
In addition to do all the irrigation and the sod work and the grading.
And I, I, I understand you're wanting us to move it, and we're, the board is willing to say yes, that it can be moved, we can, that feasibly can allow us to continue maintaining what's there. The problem is, what you're asking this board is to ask the neighbors, your neighbors and everyone in Gateway, to foot the bill for what you're wanting for your property. That's where I have trouble with it. It's hard for me to ask the other residents of this community to pay for, for what you want on your property when it's been there and you bought the property the way that it is. That's...
Can we, just trying, I agree, Margaret, can we not just make this offer to you and hold it open for 12 months and you decide when you can afford it?
Okay.
How about that?
Next fall, probably.
Well, you just, let's just get, make this offer valid for 12 months until such a time as the gentleman can afford it.
Great. Is that agreeable?
That is agreeable.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay.
Do you wanna go on record on that, a motion to...
Mr. Senior, please make a motion to that effect.
I'd like to make a motion that we proceed according to the recommendation by Scott that we relocate the fence and at the cost, approximate cost of 700, and what was it, 25 bucks at the expense of the resident and hold the offer open for 12 months.
I'll second.
I was gonna say, instead of putting a price, just say at the owner's expense.
I would like to see the cost for that, because as you said on the last estimate, there was a $500 unforeseen in there.
We're gonna make it 725, period.
But is there any unforeseen dollars in there?
But if he doesn't do it for a year, that 725 might not be...
It could go up.
Approximately 725 and hold it open for 12 months.
I'll provide a copy of that.
That's my motion.
I'll second it, yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pooed.
Okay.
Five, zero. Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Thank you.
Item 3B is the Gateway Pond Maintenance Standard Final Version, Mr. Tinkle.
Almost final version, he's gonna give us some more changes.
Oh, no.
One of them was...
We have some recommendations from the community.
Don't shoot the messenger.
I'm giving you two documents. One is the results of our chemical tests so far on the weirs.
No, ten seconds.
Would you not get it?
Yeah.
I'll give you one of these.
And I need the top one.
That's if I can do the distribution.
Everybody, always skip.
Thank you. Thank you.
The one that's got the little markings on it.
I need the results, Senator.
The results?
The results, please.
Is there some kind of table or something that goes with this set?
I'm sorry?
Something that says allowable standards or something that we...
Yeah, pardon me for my secretarial skills. They are non-existent. What it is, took Ernesto, I just met with him Monday when we took the December samples up, and he had already typed up for each of our basins in just a little bit of a matter of explanation. 90 is our number that's been assigned to Gateway by Lee County Pines and Control. Point 1 is Basin Weir 1. Point 2 is Basin Weir 2, which is in Pelican Reserve, right next to Tree Line. 90.3 is the Pelican Reserve East Basin and 90.4 is the Cypress Links Gateway Basin and Weir 5 is Basin 5 at Gateway Greens Drive by the ninth hole. So that's what that 90.12345 means. Across the top are your indicators of what we were testing for, and I didn't have enough room to type all that, but the very first one, TPO4, is your total phosphorus. Second one is your orthophosphorus. The third one is nitrates and nitrates. Fourth one is ammonia, NH3. Fifth one is chlorophyll. The next one is TKN, total keyhole nitrogen, and the last one, or the next to the last one, WA TSI, that's your tropic state index. And don't ask me what WA means. And the last one is salinity. These are the results. What I did, as I highlighted on each of yours with the yellow, those parameters that are outside the range as determined by Lee County. If you want to use for comparison, on total phosphorus, the range is .05 to .1. .05 to .1. For orthophosphorus, it's .005 to .02. For nitrates and nitrates, it's .005 to .0, 0.1, 0.1. Ammonia is .005 to 0.5. Gary?
We didn't break any of the sound barriers on nitrates?
No, no. Nitrites and nitrates and ammonia, all passed.
Doesn't that kind of surprise you based upon some of these?
There's several things that surprised me on this. We'll get to it here in a second. Chlorophyll, 5 to 40, 5 to 40. TKN, he's got a TN, 1 to 2. And he doesn't have a limit on salinity. That's an informational deal. And then the last one is tropic state index. Anything 0 to 59 is good, 60 to 69 is fair, and over 70 to 100 is poor. And those are all based on water quality parameters.
What causes tropic index to go overboard?
Good question. The tropic index is essentially made up of three tests. The total phosphorus, the nitrates, and chlorophyll. Chlorophyll. I do not have, and I don't know that I would understand it if I did have, the equation. It's a logarithmic equation that takes those three parameters and adds them and comes up with this number. The thing that scares me is what we're seeing in Basins 4 and Basin 5, which is Gateway. We went in November up to 73 in Basin 4. That's predominantly all of the north half of Gateway community. And then we went up to 84 on Basin 5, which is everything south of Gateway Greens Drive and takes in the south half of Gateway. I don't know to what extent that chlorophyll, that 212.7, and I'm very, very careful in doing the sampling, I've done enough sampling to make sure that you don't get a non-representive sample. What the dickens happened on that 212 is just out of line. It's out of whack. I don't know what could have happened unless very possibly there could have been a problem in the lab, but that number just seems haywire. But it is also a constituent of the parameters that make up the TSI, so it could also explain why maybe it jumped as high as 84. But when we took the samples, Elle and I took them Monday, the look, and I know that's dangerous because you're going to have nice, clear water and it's hydrochloric acid, but the look of the water in Basin 4, north into Gateway, and Basin 5 was still that brownish, tannic acid look, not good. And Elle told me that she had been over earlier last week and was looking at Daniel's Preserve, and I guess just on her normal maintenance, and said it was really dark. I know my basket that I do the sample in is about that size to put the quart jar in and it's about that tall. It's quite metallic. I dropped it down into Weir 5 and I lost it at about two feet. Couldn't see it.
Did you do December 15th that?
I'm sorry?
Did you do December the 15th?
Yeah, we'll have the results in January.
The consecutive ones is the real telling one.
Correct. If January, or I'm sorry, if the January pickup of the December results, and Ernesto told me, and Lee County's off for the next two weeks, effective tomorrow, so getting anything out of them prematurely is not going to happen. They're off. But he told me the minute he runs the test, he's going to let me know because if we accept the pond maintenance standards and the provisions that that calls for, then if either one of Basin 4 or Basin 5 fails, we just put ourselves in a position to go to the second level of testing. And Ernesto at one time said that he was concerned about the magnitude of samples that we're bringing in, but he sees with what we're doing, he really feels that Gateway is way ahead of the ball of other people in trying to tie all the testing in with a pond's maintenance standard provision, he would be willing to take. And if we have to run three more tests on Basin 4 or three more tests on Basin 5 to do the next segments, he'd be willing to do that.
Are these all free tests?
Yes, they're free. If we went out on the street, they'd be $500 to $800 per site.
That was my question. And are we going to be able to continue to get free tests if we approve these standards?
He said he would if we would stay to those segments. Now, if we get up and we would have a double failure, two monthly, or two consecutive month failures, and then we have to go to the provision that we sample, keep in mind, we have essentially two basins, 30 ponds in each one. Three are the segment ponds, and counting the main one is four, take away the 30, it means you've got 26 basins to test. Now, we're going to be up the creek without a paddle. We're going to have to go outside and do it. He won't do that many. It's just way too big.
Then if it comes to commercial...
Yep, we're going to have to go commercial, and it's going to get very expensive. I'm hoping that next month, we have good readings, we're back under 70, and we keep on going. But I think it does point out an issue, and I've been driving around, at least in Gateway Greens where we're predominantly 4 and 5, and looking at manholes, catch basins, street inlets. And we have got, we have got, we can't kick the can down the road anymore. We have got to get out and clean these basins. These things are discharging right into the ponds, and that logically would be a source of where we could start. I was going to take and do a grab sample of one of the basins, but I thought if I get data that taints it one way or the other, it's not going to be good. So we know that that is a maintenance procedure that should be being done, and I would guess that just in my neighborhood, most of those castings on those covers on the inlets, they're like they're thermite welded. They've never been opened, never been opened. So we've got some work to do. I have no idea what's in the bottom of these things and to what extent it's adding... Forget it. It's adding to, and it's off.
Is that pregame?
It's off. Tell me the Colts are going to get beat this weekend. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Have you shown these findings by any chance? Tell her that we said hello.
I'm sorry.
Have you shared these numbers with the pond group?
We just had the meeting and yes, we saw them.
And did Louis Lemare, who that was his...
Didn't have him for Lou, but I gave a copy to Bob or gave him to Phil, and he gave them to Bob, so...
Louis, this was his field of dreams for a number of years.
Yeah, there's another thing, Gary, that I did not do. Pelican Reserve is concurrently testing Weir 2, which is your 86.1, I believe. Their number's 86. That's theirs is 86.1. I did not check, but I'm going to. I want to compare because we both take samples same place, same day. I'm anxious to see how the results for Weir 2 compare of what I sampled and took up to the lab versus what they sampled and took up to the lab, because I believe we're both using the same bottles. We're icing our samples down, and I'm assuming that he's icing his samples down. In other words, we're proper protocol on that.
Louis, I can't, he's an expert.
Okay, well, then, so it means that they should be, they should be very similar.
To remediate 212.7 chlorine, what is...
Chlorophyll.
Chlorophyll, I'm sorry. What is, what was the fragrance that I keep looking?
Well, here's a good thing.
Chlorophyll used to be the thing when we were kids that they had a little...
This might give you, this might give you an indicator. This is what the water quality parameter tables say on chlorophyll, 5 to 40, what I indicated to you. The issue, dangerous oxygen fluctuations, excessive turbidity. I don't know about EA because I didn't do a DO test, but I can guarantee you there is excessive turbidity in 4 and 5.
Yeah, you described...
I cannot figure out what it is that when you go from Gateway 4, which is up on Cypress Links at the north end of Gateway, where Margaret's Stony Brook Community comes in in the south, the north half of Hampton Park comes in, Pond 130 and blends there, goes to Weir 3, it's amazing that you can go that distance, which is across the Ibis Golf Course, essentially. That's it. And you take and go from a fluctuation of what we have of what, 12.51 to 212.
Yeah, it's a 250% increase.
Well, more than that. Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, more than that. Yeah, 2,000, 2,500% increase.
Don't you think that before we all stopped drinking the water, that we ought to get a second round of tests?
We are, we are. Well, the reason I brought this to you is just to indicate and show you where we are on this testing. It's been six months since we started it. But the information that was particularly important to me is that we've had two that went over the limit as we were talking on the ponds, and it could trigger it next month, and we'll just see what it is when we get there.
Thank you.
If I find out on, after the first of the year from Ernesto, that we did go over 70 on either one, or I'll get to both of you quick, or get to the board very quickly and let you know what...
And the remediation would be aeration?
Just depends. That's kind of getting out of my league, Gary. I think we need to get the engineers and biologists that do this stuff in and take a look at it and try to make a determination. But I certainly, right off the bat with this turbidity, is get in there and start cleaning these storm sewers out because something's wrong that's creating that turbidity. And it's of a color that looks like tannic acid. I don't know if you know that brown boot color? That's what it looks like. Okay, going on, our committee met on Monday and a lively, lively discussion ensued. I'm sorry, what you have in front of you are two recommendations of the committee relative to the standards that were in your book, that were dated December 8. Issue one is on page five, these were the recommendations of the committee. On page five of the standard, as it's currently written in red, and you guys got a red line version, after evaluating and consequential erosion and/or water quality issues, the committee suggested that that be changed to after evaluation and documentation of any current erosion and water quality issues. Evaluation and documentation. Not a big thing, but that was the desire of the committee. And then the second one, under the red line of item number one, where it says, "With a mutual understanding, the litoral plants are always considered as a part of the overall CDD Pond Bank Erosion Plan Reference, Page 8C," they suggested that it be changed, and the red and underlined, "Change to for litoral requirements related to pond bank restoration projects, see Paragraph C on Page 9." Basically the same thing.
Where do we see...
Very similar.
Where do we see what you just read?
On one and two of the pages I just handed you out. These are the only two...
Is page five?
Yeah, both of them are on page five. The first paragraph and number one.
So on page one, under the heading, following four examples, etc. Page one.
Page one.
And then it says example one. You with me?
Oh, I have my hand out. Yeah, yeah. Oh, hold it. Don't go to those yet. Don't go to those. These are talking points.
Oh, I want to talk about it.
Okay, I understand. I'm here to present. We're only dealing with...
Are we not looking at this just now?
Yes, we're asking, we're asking for the board's consideration of these two items. Those are the only changes we want to make to the pond standards. Only changes.
In the red line, the red line.
Those two red lines, yes. That's it. That's it.
So you don't want to change number seven on page five?
Nothing else is changing, just those two. The issue is, and I'm sure you can understand the frustration, you've heard it, heard it before and probably will hear it more, is there is a lot of concern over years and years and years of things not being done. Now, that's in the eyes of the beholder as to the definition of what's done and what's not done, but I think we would all agree that the practices that we have been following have left a lot to be desired. What one of the members of the committee came up with is an example of four issues, four topics, and again, we're not asking these to be put in. I think what we're trying to do is to explain some of the concerns that are out there relative to the litoral issue. Example one, and I'm not going to sit here and read it to you, but it's the issue of where you essentially have a development order that is silent, has a development order that is silent, and a group comes in and asks for those to be done. That reverts back to the issue, and I think, I'm not going to sit here and beat a dead horse, the buck stops here. I don't think there's any doubt, no challenge to that. You guys have the responsibility through South Florida Water Management District and everything else that you've got to maintain these things. So you've got to stand by whatever decision you make, whether you remove litorals or don't remove litorals. But I think what we're trying to say here is this is what the feeling is on the street relative to that issue, is that if you don't have a really substantial issue for not removing them or a concern for not removing them, then remove them. Okay? In other words, if they don't want them and you don't have a reason to have them, please take them out.
Now, when do we get to discuss what you just said?
You can stop me anywhere you want. Again, none of this I want, and none of this the committee wants, this to interfere with the recommendation to go ahead and endorse the standards. What we're trying to do is just to present what is seen by the committee as issues that have gone on for the last four months of talking of these points. Now, at first, they would have liked to have had them put in there, but again, this is a working document, and I believe it's a good document as we have it written. Let's try to start implementing it, but...
The question's simple.
Go ahead.
Somebody comes to us and wants us to spend monies to remove it, and like Margaret said, the whole rest of the Gateway community is supposed to bear that expense? Or is your recommendation that the community that decides that they want us to go and expend monies, they pay for it?
I, as we talked about in the meeting, that came up. As it came up in the meeting, I don't know that the issue of the removal is an expense that should be brought back because it's a job that you guys would be doing anyway. I think the issue is that if you have to replace them because you have a failure after, that's where the issue and the rubber really meets the road, in my opinion. In other words, if you have a DO that's silent and you have litorals that you indicate are not needed and you remove them, then that would be a part of the maintenance that you could be doing, and I could easily justify that. But if you have to come back in because within a period of two months, six months, 12 months, we have a water quality failure as a result of removing those, now you've got a different question. Now you've got a different question.
What's the answer to that different question?
I don't have the answer to that question. But it's just sort of like what we've got, everything else that we have talked about. The people on the inside of every one of these streets of the ponds, and God only knows, I've heard this in Gateway or in Gateway Greens, "Why am I paying for this? You rich people have the houses on the lake, you pay for it. And my deal is, it's fine. Just all that water that comes off your roof, drink it because you're not putting it in the street because it's going into my lake, not your lake." You don't do that. That's just stupid. The issue, everybody's in this thing together, which then really puts you guys in a position that you're going to earn your salary, get, welcome to the real world. going to earn your salary, uh, get, welcome to the real world. These, there's some tough issues out there, and they were created by the fact that somebody wasn't thinking when some of this stuff was done years ago. Then the next issue gets in, or the next example, and I, I don't have an answer for that, Gary, but these are the things that we talked over in each of the meetings.
Hold on just one second, please. Isn't the important part of that, the, the little part that says the CDED may at its discretion?
Yes.
That's, that's the, that's, to me, that's the important part, which, which we understand gives this body the, the decision-making authority on, on items that are not otherwise spoken to.
Bill, nobody's arguing that, that that's exactly what the case is. But the reason why that, after at its discretion, those next seven or eight words are added, after evaluating and, uh, presenting the, the facts, then going ahead. In other words, what the concern is, there's a lot of distrust of what's, what's happened in the community. I'm just trying to tell it like it is. I hope that we can get around that by adopting new, adopting these standards, getting specifications, getting people out there, doing the work, and get these maintained like they should have been in the first place. I think that will go a long way to eliminating the, the trust, or the distrust.
Thank you. Margaret has a question, please?
We don't have a question. I just, I, and I appreciate all the work that the committee's done. I know you've worked hard on it, but I think the revision that we have in the book, I think that the wording is perfect. I prefer it to what they're requesting the changes be.
As, as is?
Yeah, as is.
Their concern was the lack of the word, the documentation, and current. Documentation and current. If you would want to take and keep consequential, which I think introduces you to evaluating potential risk, that's, that's up to you all. You guys got to make that call.
Are you good?
The paragraph one, I, one way or the other, it's not that big of a deal to me on number one, or, uh, the, the changes on number one are not that big. The one that tells you at all is that very first one. That's the big one. Anyway, these were the suggested changes of the committee. Then example two is where you have a twenty-five percent littoral coverage that a DO might say, and if you have, let's say, fifty percent littorals already there, is the way we can go in there and reduce that littoral. For example, if we have a combination residential golf course, residential wetland, can we achieve the twenty-five percent by removing the twenty-five percent excess that are on, let's say, the residential end or the commercial side? That would be a, a second alternative. Uh, the third one is where you have a DO that calls for a hundred percent. The issue is, is that, that's pretty definitive, a hundred percent. The only thing that would come up there would be the alternative of a variance, and would there be any consideration of the board sponsoring or, uh, endorsing possibly an HOA or a POA from trying to get a, a variance from that hundred percent requirement? I don't know, at this point in time, any document that calls for a hundred percent. I, I think what we're trying to do here is pick out a what-if, a what-if. And then the fourth one is, an HOA has a request that twenty-five percent littoral, but where there are no littorals are present, we, we do the replanting. The request is there that we coordinate with the homeowners, and this, this is a good example of the, everything on this side of Griffin Drive all the way up. It's essentially a hundred percent residential. So when we go out and we're going to be doing littoral planting, this is why I said a couple of months ago, when we're doing the facilities plan, I think it's essential that we're looking at the erosion issue, we also be looking at the littoral issue to try to figure out how to blend these two such that we don't put down a hundred and eight dollar a foot Armamax, and then come back and want to penetrate it by cutting holes in it. And I think that can be done very easily. It does necessitate having, have to have a copy of the DO to know what it says you have to do, but I believe just looking at what I believe to be the correct DOs for those three going up the way, there are littoral requirements. Our recommendation is, again, making these two changes, but I'm here to try to answer any questions. We certainly, certainly, as committee, want to see the board, uh, adopt these standards, uh, this afternoon.
As soon as possible, is that correct?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the document as it is without making any additional changes to it.
Without these two additional adjustments. Go to second to that.
I'll second for the purpose of discussion. I'd like to comment on that.
Uh, hold on just one second. You made the, the motion, are you, do you want to, do you want to defend your motion, or is it okay with Mr. Senior to go ahead?
No, he's fine.
Please.
Um, Ed, um, I don't want to address these four examples as, as an embedded part of these standards.
No, and they're not.
I think it's important, though, that we recognize the work that you've done, and I mean, it's obviously on public record that you've, you've presented these examples today. From my opinion, we're pre-litigating situations that may arise as we go forward with these HOAs and residences. And I, I think we're in, we're getting to some dangerous territory trying to paint these examples into a standard document.
And, and you can see the issues we had in trying to meet and address these. You, you first had to define the problem, and this, as we see it, are the, are the problems.
The, the changes you want to make, which in my opinion are minimal, um, now, the first change, um, your group would like to add the word, um, add documenting current, documenting.
Evaluation and documentation.
Yeah. Um, the, the wording we have now, and I know Margaret's been concerned about this, and I support Margaret's position, is that we really need to be addressing consequential erosion and water quality issues, and, and that's one of the reasons it's in there.
What about both?
So why don't we put documenting any current and consequential?
What's that, say, about both?
And then we can address, and there's nothing wrong with documenting stuff. We're, we're going to do that anyway. But we, as long as consequential stays in there, and we, we're gonna, if, let's say we're addressing a lake in, in Silver Lakes, which I know is a, one of your, one of the, um, guys on your committee from Silver Lakes, if he's wanting to, has to document the current water standards, uh, as they stand, when we're about to enter this period of activity, then what's wrong? Then I've got no problem in documenting currents, current water quality data as well as consequential.
Are you okay with that?
Okay.
So we do both. So I'm trying to accommodate the, the work that this group's done. And the, and the other change is, is nothing. It's, all we've done here is gone to page nine C.
It's nine C, not eight C.
Because there's a table of contents gone in and shoved everything, everything back a page.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the reason that I like the way that it's written is because it's mutual understanding. It's not just us saying it needs to be this way.
Right.
It's the HOA and the residents. It's a mutual understanding.
I support that. Then, then, then I'll go with that. I just want to make that one change to the first recommendation, current and consequential.
And I'll amend my motion to, to include that change to the first one.
Mr. Manager, do you, you have the amended motion?
I believe I do. It would be to amend.
Page eight to page nine.
On page five, um, under the G, uh, the standards, where would the red line, it read, after evaluation and documentation of any consequential erosion?
Any current.
Current and consequential.
Current and consequential.
Current and consequential.
Current and.
Yeah.
Okay. And the second one is just to make it read on page nine.
Page nine.
We've gone from eight to nine because the table of contents has gone in.
Further, further discussion of this motion.
Bill, one, one other thing, just to make clear, I didn't address, uh, or the, the committee didn't do anything to challenge the other ones, but I hope that throughout this, and you've got the red line copy, you saw all the things, I believe we caught that you, uh, and/or, uh, I think Molly made a couple of, uh, changes. I, I hope we caught all those.
Are you ready to vote on the motion?
Just one last comment, and then to vote to find. My only concern here is that if we get a request from a resident or an HOA to go in and remove a lot of littorals, and we do it, and then they have water quality problems, and they have erosion problems, we've done what they've requested, and then they come back and say, hey, you shouldn't have removed those littorals, because now we got a water quality problem, and now we got an erosion control problem, then we're paying double for work that was unnecessary.
Sounds like Washington to me.
We're just going to have to adjust, address those on an individual basis, I think.
Uh, Cal, there is one typo on page five, on the end of the first paragraph. Uh, it should say page ten, not page nine.
Okay.
Because everything's been moved on.
Good catch.
Any other comment?
Yep.
Yep, was that Gary? Yep?
Yep.
Yep.
Do we have an understanding from Mr. Delvega that littorals would not aid in helping any of these highlighted conditions? And if so, can you provide that in writing someplace?
Uh, I can ask him, I can ask him. I, I don't know that that's in his, if he's got that biological deal to do that.
Well, he gave a big presentation regarding the littorals and the value and all of their filtering and removing.
I, I don't know, Gary, that it could be a chemical issue, that chemistry would be required, chemical feed to do some of these. I don't know if it's aeration. The biggest problem is, don't have a clue as to what's causing it at this point in time. I think what's going to be interesting is when we get into these bathymetrics and taking some of these samples, it's going to be real interesting to see what's in the bottom of these ponds. It's going to be real interesting.
Having said that.
So I don't want to, don't want to second guess what we need to do.
I don't know. And with the I don't know goes along with, we're now putting in a situation which, kind of the summary version is, people get to remove littorals, and nobody can figure out who's going to pay for them, and/or if we're creating a document that's going to be policy, Bill then responds, well, we'll take it on an individual basis. Well, if I was one of the somebodies, I'd come back to this and go, wait a minute. You created this document that was supposed to be the criteria, now all of a sudden you're taking it, and you're, you're mincing it and chopping it, but yet we still don't know, we do know that we've got a report here that indicates that there are some possible frightening levels of stuff, but yet we're focusing predominantly with this on removing littorals. And we know that Mr. Delvega had a.
No, those five, those four, those four things that we talked about are not in there. They're not in there.
And he said how valuable littorals are. So the focus seems to be to get rid of them, because there's this widespread rampant demand within the community, but it seems to be so small, to be so widespread and rampant, or we don't hear it.
Well, it, it may be. I mean, it's the choice of these people that live in here that have that DO to whether or not they come in, petition you, and ask the board to remove these. I think then what it behooves you guys is to check and see what we're going to be getting on maybe the next couple of tests. If we see a continuation of these tests, and especially basin four, which includes Silver Lakes, okay, which includes Silver Lakes, then they may be one of the things causing it, or could be.
We need.
But if our problem is in another basin that doesn't have anything to do with them, then it doesn't look like the smoking gun is coming from that direction. So we need more time.
We need some more testing.
Yes.
And we need the DOs to be examined and, and reported back to us, so we know what in the dickens we're dealing with.
Yeah.
And if it turns out to be that Silver Lake suddenly does happen to be in basin four, and does happen to have, uh, several items that are beyond standards, who pays for putting littorals back that we just removed?
That's, that's what I said earlier. That's, that's a decision you guys are going to have to make. Uh, I, I think if we find out that at the next test, which are the December results, that basin four is over seventy again, we just triggered going upstream. Well, one of the upstream deals we test is the leg that goes straight to Silver Lake.
Thank you.
So we'll find out real quick, like, whether it is them or not them. It could be someplace else. We don't know.
Vote on the, vote on the amended motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, four to one. Mr. Newbauer is negative. Thank you. Mr. Tinkell, the board will stand in recess for ten minutes.
Can you take that?
No.
Is that the wrong guy?
No.
Maybe he's riding a rough ride.
That's where he's coming from.
What's that?
Was he doing the, the segment?
My wife always says.
He was part of the special group that was certified on all of the approaches.
Yeah, I know.
Exactly.
Never, we've never adopted any pond standards in this district since we have started in nineteen eighty-six. This document is a hell of a lot more than we've ever had before. We've got, I've been to a lot of these seminars.
He can do it better.
Experts say the more littorals that you are, from the standpoint of water quality, filtering, the trash.
Probably Arrow Mexico.
Where, where Ford has the big factory down there.
We wouldn't. And what this document says, we've been very careful to put in here that at the end of the day, the district, there's always the ponds, it has the responsibility to comply on those ponds, and we have the trump card, and that it has to be there. And, and what's good about these standards is that we've got in water quality testing initiatives that says, we're not, anything we do is going to be driven by water quality results. We're going to set a twenty-five percent littoral policy, we're going to plant them all in a chopper, it's going to be driven by water quality results testing, and this is a scientific approach, which is better.
Well, that's sort of what it sounds like, you know?
The only reason why we would, the only way we would address that is if, let's say there's a homeowner's association or a, or a, say, look, we're sick of all this spikewash in our pond.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And we've got to be on, say that now. And, and quite honestly, some of the ponds have been in the lake for twenty years, and they're looking at it. So what we've got to say, yeah, I mean, there's.
The kid that's riding in the white seat, if the guy on the left seat.
Some residents are, some residents are saying, it looks ugly, and the snakes are in there, and they have a different set of eyes to the contest. First, you say, oh, it's a nice thing, it's a nice thing standard spikewash, and other people say it looks like a bunch of people. So what we have to say is, okay, if residents come to us, they're the residents that are the ones who are paying, and the residents are the ones who are looking at it. And most of them, I think, we should listen very carefully to what the residents are. And if there's a bunch of residents that say, we really don't want this spikewash in there, and talk about it at the other side of the pond. As long as it doesn't affect the quality of water quality, in doing so, I'm okay with it, because I think we have to listen to our residents.
We have to know.
But we have, we have to figure, and that's why the documents say, we have to give due consideration to any consequential results of taking them out, which could be water quality and erosion mainly. And we've got to bring the experts in and say, do you think it's going to affect it? If we move those littorals?
It's right off of six two four.
Yeah, it could be. And, and, but at least, the document recognizes the rights and concerns of the residents, and it also recognizes the discretion, the power of the district. Not because I'm, I'm not here to be powerful, and I'm not here to be heavy-handed. No, I'm not. It's nothing to do with that. It's that, rather, we have a responsibility to be compliant. We can't just relinquish that just because a bunch of residents want us to come in and talk about it. It has to be a two-way street, and we have to sit down and figure it out and work with the HOAs.
They were crashing.
And I'm not in favor of confrontation. I'm, you could probably see, I'm not, I'm not like that. And I'm all, I'm all for making deals, making agreements that we can all.
So those convoys.
If it doesn't work out well, I don't have to say, because execution is what comes next. Doing the standards is one thing, but now I was actually going to carry it out to the next. And I have some problems with people that I want to address as soon as we hit the new year.
That's too funny.
That's too funny.
Oh, it's just a riot.
Oh, my gosh.
The ATC's going, I bet. I'm done. You got it, you got it.
All yours, baby.
Did you read about, what they found about that page food thing?
That's the fuel.
That a guy had the fuel selector.
Yeah, now, what did they mean? It was forced in. I didn't, I was trying to get the.
Fuel selector typically, and the piper is down on the floor. Got either left tank, right tank. Both tanks are off. And it's, the selector is down on the floor.
Okay.
So he obviously had, and it's like a straight with a screw, and he obviously had the pointer, how do you say, upside down. So he.
Oh, my gosh.
And which standard protocol is, is you.
Is that part of checklist, isn't it? Oh, yeah, yeah, you should know. It's kind of like on my motorcycle, I get in my reserve tank. I know when I'm running low. I don't have a gauge in my fuel tank. Also, I can put that reach down and flip to the reserve. That's checklist, isn't it, to look at where the arrows point?
But obviously, it's not one of those where you can sit there and read it. You've got to just, but every, every decent flight instructor trains, and it's standing, and you do the liftoff, and you take, I've got it. And we pull the throttle back, and you go, okay, now what are you going to do? And you're seeing mirrors, the thing's descending, watching to see what the person goes.
I've got, I've got one.
I'm going for fuel select. If I stay fine, don't touch it.
Yes, yes, I have one more. I have one more.
Except for then, okay, you've got the airplane.
The sign is shift, and there's no indication of something.
Or are they saying that?
Or are they saying that the selector wasn't, he moved by impact?
No, the selector wasn't moved by impact.
They made...
Again, the selector says, this, all right, both, both off. So it's both, left, right, off, and so he had this part. So he had enough residual and he's...
Yeah. What would be the reason for having it in the off position?
Somebody on that fence is maintenance.
I think it could be me.
Well, the only other time that you're off is...
Absolutely.
So nothing...
Which is, takeoff is... For the main...
And also, when you do your standard run-up and you do the mag check and all that other stuff.
You would notice that, right? Yeah. Yeah, it's not that much of a...
So you probably...
Well, then I'd like to get referred. That's what I was just thinking.
Private pilots are scary.
Wouldn't you decide to do it?
There's some, there's some professional ones that are scary as hell.
Yeah, this is true, too. Make sure that that's...
All right. We'll just talk about it now and see.
Hey, Mr. Paul, how are you, sir?
Good. Great. I'll call back.
I'm sorry? Paul, I'm thinking we were talking to Scott because I'm not...
Would be the issue, would you be here? So we did. So we did. And what I do is...
Well, and I understand that it's already so, anyways, but, yeah, why couldn't we do this to the family? And then you got, you got...
We really can't do, I mean, taking...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's like, this board, you got to do that.
Well, that's up to the board.
I know.
I know. I've just kind of gone about it.
Well, it's pretty close, but I've only got one.
Do you have that new college reserve?
Do you have that...
Yeah, I've got the verbal on the, I've got two recorders.
Can I have one to take off?
You should take one.
I'll give it back to you.
Well, that's the district. It's just a backup.